In the state of Vermont, our hereby notified and warrants a meet at 10:00 a.m. at the Town Hall in said town of Jamaica on the first Tuesday of March, March 4th, 2025, to transact the following business and act upon the following articles. Because we have Representative Sebelius here, we're going to begin with her allowing her to give us an update from Mount Pelear. So, is she here? There you are. Very good. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you all for coming to Town Meeting. It's really important. I'd love to start with your patience to read a resolution sponsored by myself and Senators Harris and Hushin. A House Concurrent Resolution Honoring Dedicated Jamaica Community Leader and Volunteer Clara Robinson. Whereas in the town of Jamaica, there is hardly a facet of life that has not greatly benefited from the participation of Clara Robinson. And whereas being the mother of six children would for many be a job leaving no time for any other role for Clara Robinson, her family's duties were merely one aspect of an extraordinary life. And whereas municipally, she has served in numerous elected or appointed positions, including Justice of the Peace, Library Trustee, Planning Commission Member, and on the Select Board. And whereas Clara Robinson's deep concern for the well-being of the area's youth has manifested itself in her employment as a paraprofessional at Jamaicaville School and separately as a member of its school board, as a Wyndham County Family Court Guardian at Lytham, and as a longtime leader of the Jamaica Youth Group. And beyond these official responsibilities, she has always looked out for children and tried to find ways to make a positive difference in their lives and those of their families. And whereas the parishioners at the Jamaica Community Church have cherished Clara Robinson as an active member and appreciated her many contributions to church governance as a trustee. And whereas at Valley Cares, her volunteering with the exercise program and other activities has been most welcome. And whereas throughout the town of Jamaica, Clara Robinson is known as a good friend and special member of the community who has always been one of the first individuals to jump in and volunteer for any activity or event. And her decades of devoted public sector, nonprofit, and religious service have been beyond the call of duty. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives that the General Assembly honors dedicated Jamaica Community Leader and Volunteer Clara Robinson. And be it further resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Clara Robinson into the Jamaica Town Hall. Thank you very much for electing me, re-electing me as your representative in the House. Many of you know I did run also for Speaker of the House. I did that because I was concerned about what I consider to be a lack of appropriate action related to our education system statewide and our healthcare system, which is deeply dependent on federal funding and therefore really vulnerable to federal changes. I was not successful in that run, but we did see, we have seen some changes in the legislature and we are really struggling in the legislature and with the administration to address both education and healthcare. The Governor has dropped a bill. We put out a proposal early in the session. Many of you probably saw, looking at really sweeping changes to education in the state of Vermont. It looks at consolidating the entire, all of the schools' districts into five districts. What does that mean? It means that we would get rid of school boards and superintendents and supervisory units, except for five. This Jamaica would be in the Governor's proposal in the Southeast District, which is Windsor and Wyndham. So that bill has just arrived to the legislature on Friday of last week. It's 200 pages long. We had the broad idea, but no language to work with. I will tell, it also looks at changing how we would fund education. So rather than the boards developing a budget and what's needed, the state would say, here's what's available per student for you. If you need more, go ahead and figure it out. It gives the, it gives Mount Pelear a way to say, we're not spending that much. There are lots of different perspectives on how possible that may or may not be. In addition, the Governor's proposal would assign every student to a public school district and it would give every student the opportunity to enter into a lottery for school choice. So as I've said, a 200-page bill has landed with the legislature. I think the notion of expanding school choice is not going to be something that the legislature supports. And we have, I may have talked about this last, last year, a real challenge in our school choice laws and federally. So I think between governance, funding, and school choice policies, we're going to be seeing a lot of changes and negotiation. I think that, I was asked in Wardsboro if I had an opinion about the Governor's proposal. My opinion thus far is that it is of the, a scale that is appropriate. I think our, we've lost a lot of students. Our buildings in the state of Vermont have been without public funding for repair or improvement for decades. And we're having a lot of challenges with workforce, hiring staff, and administrators. It's imperative for me that we maintain high-quality education, access to it in every community for every child. And the system that we have now is incredibly fragile and needs to be overhauled. That's my opinion. There are a lot of details to be worked out. Chrissy reminded me to, I have two information sessions coming up, one in person next Friday and one online next Saturday. The details of that, I've left my information here. My website is on here, as well as my contact information. During the legislative session, I send out, hey? I send out a weekly email updating folks on what's happening in Mount Pelear. So there'll be details there. I'm happy to meet with folks on those issues. In addition, in addition, in terms of healthcare, I am not, I'm really worried because of what's happening federally. And as I've said, you know, our system is deeply dependent on federal funds. We have a, we have an older population in Vermont, which uses and needs more healthcare services. And the system that we have set up is very reliant on federal funds. So I don't have anything to report on that. I think I would say generally, I'm worried about what we are seeing in terms of funding changes at the federal level on many different aspects. And I think that the state and your local boards are going to have to deal with the effects of that. And so I would encourage you, I thank you for coming out for Town Meeting, and I would encourage you to, excuse me, stay connected to your local boards. It doesn't mean you have to support everything that they're doing, but I expect the challenges that they're facing, and these boards have already had to deal with a lot of challenges around natural disasters, et cetera, to be grown. So I would just encourage you to really dig in with your local governments. Other, other pieces that I would highlight, and then at more discretion, take questions. There is a Regional Property Assessment Districts Bill. This is looking at how we value properties. There are, throughout the state, so many towns that are undervalued because of what we have seen in the, in the real estate market. And this has been an ongoing effort. There's a proposal that is being worked on to create 12 Regional Property Assessment Districts in Vermont and to centralize some municipal tasks, such as maintaining grand lists, data collection, and reappraisals. I expect that there are a lot of thoughts about that and feelings. Happy to hear about all of those. In addition, I have been put on the Energy and Digital Infrastructure Committee. It's a new committee. There was a digital, an Energy and Technology Committee previously. This has been constituted. We have been working on oversight for the state's Agency of Digital Services IT Projects. There's basically been no oversight and there are hundreds of millions of dollars going into our state IT projects. So we've been working with that agency, trying to understand their procurement processes, their project processes. And we have been working on a bill to monitor what is happening within the energy transition, how, looking at existing data and what it can tell us in terms of how many fossil fuel or heating fuel delivery companies there are in the state, how many gas stations there are in the state, what are the different electric rates, because we have a number of different utilities. Because we know that all Vermonters are not feeling the energy transition, experiencing it the same way. And I am really concerned about us ending up in the same type of situation that we see with our phone lines, where we have, and broadband, where we have rural and poor communities like Jamaica and Wardsboro, who are kind of left holding the bag, really dependent on the old telephone lines that are not being maintained well or take a long time to repair. So I guess I will leave it at that. I don't know what your pleasure is in terms of questions.
Are there questions from the board? Yes. Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about the education topic? Is there any movement towards private schools, homeschooling, other alternatives that are around?
Yeah. So nationally, following COVID, we saw a lot of parents during and following COVID started to homeschool. So that is another dynamic that is impacting the population of the public schools. And then, as I said, the Governor's proposal included, includes assigning every student to a public school district and giving every student the opportunity to enter into a lottery for a private school. Was there more specific question that you were looking for?
Where can we read that?
It's up on my website. I've been, the broad strokes of that have been, I posted, there's a 200-page bill that I have not read all the language yet that supports that proposal. And the legislature is now going to look at that law that is being proposed or changes to the law. Thank you. You're welcome.
On the same topic, is there a certain number of students who will be allowed to go or certain county? Does it depend on their academics? None of that? For, for getting into, if they, if they get into the lottery and they win?
Those are just-
Is there a certain number of students that the state's not allowed to go into lottery versus, you know, the ones that always go, that pay to go there?
Yeah. Those are, I have not read the detail yet in the Governor's proposal, but I feel pretty confident in saying to you that an expansion of school choice statewide, as is being proposed by the Governor even through a lottery system, is not going to happen.
So hand over here. Yes.
I had just read this somewhere, and maybe, maybe you haven't gotten to this yet, but I heard that the lottery was going to be nine through 12 only. So I am, I just read that in an article somewhere. And then also a follow-up for you is, I may have missed it and I apologize if I did, but did you mention the survey that's out for education?
I did not. Thanks, Chrissy. So, and I posted that up on my website. There's a link to it in my latest update. It's a survey actually that the Speaker put out. I'm really pleased soliciting input from Vermonters about the status of education right now and the proposals that are out there and what your priorities are. So you can link to that one from my last update on my website.
I heard that it's possibly last chance on that survey, like it's going to be closing soon? Is that-
I think you have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. I think the, I hope the Assembly continues to fund free meals in public schools, breakfast and lunch. Do you think they know?
I don't know. The Governor has proposed reducing that. That is something that I had not supported in the past and then had supported it because it was allowing us to actually draw down additional federal funds, which was, and ensure that every student had this. Some schools had universal meals and a lot of schools do not. And so now we are looking at a situation again with federal funding being cut, although none of that is, you know, for sure yet. There's, there's a lot that's up in the air right now. So again, encourage you to stay in touch, stay informed. Please dial into my newsletter. Please stay in touch with your local boards. And I, in particular, am interested in hearing from you about federal impacts that you are facing. For instance, if you lose a job or you've lost funding to a service, just it's, because there's so much going on, it's really hard to keep track of that.
Did I see some, yes. Clara.
Could you ask people to stand when they speak so everyone can hear?
Did people hear that? Were you able to? Clara, stand! Now, say what you wanted to say.
Because somebody from way over there, it's really difficult for us, younger people.
Right. So if you have a question, if I recognize you, please stand so people know where the voice is coming from. CJ, did I see your hand? Thank you.
Yeah. Laura, can you say anything about the relationship between the legislature and the Green Mountain Care Board at the moment, Agency of Human Services, and what conversations are happening in terms of either side of the Green Mountain Care Board?
Maybe not as much as you, CJ, but I, there, these are important questions. They are ongoing questions that are happening at the legislature. There's a lot of back and forth. For folks that don't know, the Green Mountain Care Board oversees hospital budgets and there's a, there's a lot of tension back and forth between our hospitals and the Green Mountain Care Board, the Agency of Human Services, which oversees those entities as well, and the legislature. So there's not a lot of clarity that is coming out of the legislature, I would not, I don't think. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that there are a lot of federal questions, but also we've really, we've really walked ourselves into a situation here. So over a long time, I think.
Can you update us through your website then as you hear things?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Any other questions for representatives?
Thank you, Laura.
You're all set? You're welcome. Thank you very much. I saw some folks come in after we began the meeting. Just remember, if you want to vote, you have to be a resident of the town. Sign in over here and get your packet of papers. And when the vote is called, a color will be called. And when you do a vote, come down to center aisle, go around the outside. That keeps the flow going. Before we get to the first article, I'm going to ask Erica, the town poet laureate, to come up and speak a poem.
Before I begin, I just want to say that this poem has been influenced by my lifelong experiences in Quaker meeting for worship, which for those of you who do not know, and I'm not a Quaker, but I spent my childhood in the Quaker community, going to Quaker schools and have a lot of experience with that. So for those of you who do not know, the meeting for worship is a time where Quakers will gather in a community, in a, in a space not unlike this, and basically sit in silence unless the spirit moves somebody to stand up and share. And I mention this because my poem contains a moment of silence. And at the end of Quaker meeting for worship, and this is true with a lot of other meetings of different religions, people are invited to shake hands with their neighbor. And a familiar greeting at that point is to say, peace be with you. And the response is also with you. And in my poem, when I raise my hand, I invite you to share a moment of silence, secular moment of silence, if you want, with the community. And at the completion of that moment of silence, I will say, peace be with you. And I invite you to share that handshake with your neighbor and potentially utter those words if you would like. This is my poem and it's called, "Peace Be With You." I'm not like you. You are not like me. We come from different places. Our eyes have captured different faces. We are a myriad of mixed emotions, contradictory feelings, opinions, values, but somehow we have all agreed to sit in this space together. And when we sit here in silence, we are alone with our thoughts. We are still together in community. This is a meeting of the minds. It is a moment where we let our minds do the thinking. Our silence is a tacit agreement in a world where we may disagree. The silence is the agreement. When we are silent together, we agree to share a moment of respect and introspection. Imagine the power of all of us thinking in unison. Imagine the joy. Silence is a gauzy shawl of comfort. It is a piece of peace. And peace is love. Love without boundaries, love without the need for reciprocation. Peace is the acceptance without judgment. Peace is the absence of war. Can we have for a moment an absence of war?
Now we've brought the energy down, you can start back up. So we're going to move on to the first article in the meeting. And Article One is to elect a moderator for the term of one year. What does the body wish? Who is nominating who?
Tom Tolbert?
Tom Tolbert has been nominated. Are there other nominations?
I nominate Greg Jolly.
Greg Jolly has been nominated. He is thankful and he deplantes. Are there other nominations? Second Tom Tolbert. Okay. Closed nominations? All in favor of Tom Tolbert being your moderator for one year? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Standing? Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Greg has been with Vermont for nine years. A top dog.
Thank you.
Good night!
The town, what's other things to throw up society and library for the evening?
Come out in the conference.
For a couple of things for housekeeping before I get started, I talked with Greg and I just want to remind people of some codes and conducts and procedures. First off, this is the people's meeting. I'm only here to facilitate your wishes and your needs. You as the body make all of the decisions. When you talk, as we talked about before, please stand up and say your name so we know who's talking and who's, you know, and that we can see when we can hear you from the other side of the booth. We can do votes by the floor, but if we have seven people within the body that want to do a ballot vote, we all, and Greg also mentioned that, I lost my ballot. Greg also mentioned that if you are a resident of Jamaica, please check into the table. You can get a book here. We'll tell you that what the color is. Please use the center aisles and then exit out the sides to keep the full traffic going. If you are voting, if someone can't make it up to the ballot box, you'll need to get either Justice of the Peace or the Constable Rob to bring the ballot up for you. You can't take someone else's ballot up and put it in the box. You need to, you need to do that yourself. What else do I have here? I think that's it. I think we can get started. Each person, oh yeah, each person can only speak one time per article. And then we go around, once everyone has a chance to say what they want to say, then we can go around for a second time. But you can't, you can't speak other than that. Other than that, keep to, keep to the issues. Personal attacks are not, are not okay. We want to keep it civil. We want to keep it respectful. So with that, we're going to move on to Article Two, which is to review the town report. Do I have a motion to review the town report? So moved.
So moved. Great job. Do you have anything to say about the town report? Anything to review on?
Why approve today?
Do I have a motion to close the article then?
Oh, question? Oh. Paul.
Yes, Paul Frasier. I just want to take the time to thank our crew who put this together. Because that's a lot of work, a lot more work than it seems to sit here at my hand, but I've watched them over the years put that together. So Sarah, Mary, and the rest of the crew, thank you very much, ladies. You did a great job.
Okay. Do you want to motion to close the article?
I got one more question.
Nelson?
Nelson, Coleman. Another, and I don't know if this is proper, but another town report, we have a list of the funds we have in reserve funds, so we know how much money, but there's no art, there's no page to tell us how much we have in the highway fund, the equipment fund, sidewalk fund.
Those reports normally come from our outside audit and we still do not have our outside audit, so that will be available on our website and the town office when it's available to us.
Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Do you have a motion to close the article?
So moved.
So moved. Who is that? Second?
Second.
All in favor of closing Article, Article Two, review the town report? Say aye.
Aye.
So moved. So Article Three, we need to elect the following officers as required by law. So we're first going to start off with select person for three years. Do I have any nominations for select person for three years? Currently, the position is held by who is it held by?
Review the town report? Say aye.
Aye.
So moved. So Article 3, we need to elect the following officers as required by law. So, we're first gonna start off with select person for three years. Do I have any nominations for select person for three years? Currently, the position is held by who is it held by? By Kate Olman. Any nominees for?
I nominate Kate.
Kate Olman's been nominated? She declines. Any other nominations?
I nominate Jessica Pollak.
She's already on.
Oh, you're already on.
Yeah, she's already on. She can't be nominated.
I respect you to climb.
I got a job now, I'm okay. Greg Jolly.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm not really, I can't remember.
I nominate Greg Melman.
Okay. Greg Melman's has been nominated.
I resign in a year.
Greg nominated, has been, Greg Melman's has been nominated for the select board for a term of three years. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we're gonna close nominations. Does someone want to give one vote for Greg Melman to be selected for three years?
Captain.
Captain. Okay. Congratulations, Greg.
Congratulations.
Moving on, a select person for a term of one year. That was currently held by?
I'll nominate Kate Olman.
Kate Olman has been nominated. Seconded by Erica.
I nominate Amos Newton.
Amos Newton has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we're gonna close nominations. Can I have one vote from someone from the body to elect Kate Olman as moderator? John Beeman? Selecting her. First time up here.
Already given.
Already given. All right. So Kate, congratulations.
Can I ask you about nominations?
Yes.
Because I'm not familiar with all of this. Is it appropriate, select boards, to nominate somebody for their own board?
They can do that, as long as they're town residents and have to be town residents.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone in the body can nominate, and the board can also nominate.
Okay, thank you.
So we have third position here, select, select person for the term of one year. Do I have a nomination for select person one year?
I nominate Christina Robinson.
Christina Robinson has been nominated.
I said, why is that?
Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we're gonna close nominations. Can I have one person do a vote? April Green gives a vote. So congratulations Christina, welcome to the selection.
Thank you.
Do you actually have a three-year? Can you stand up, so we can see you? All right, moving along. Lister for term of three years. This position is currently held by Karen Amadon, who could not be here today because she is ill. Is that correct?
Wait, wait, wait. Because I think we just elected two one-years.
No. And one three-year.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. You had it wrong. Okay.
I'm right. You were right. Thank you. I'm keeping track. Lister for term of three years. That position is currently held by Karen Amadon. She couldn't be here because she is ill, but she has indicated that she is interested in retaining that position.
Then I will nominate Karen Amadon.
I second Al.
Seconded by Al. So, okay, so two nominations. Any other nominations for Lister for a term of three years? Can I have someone cast one vote for Karen Amadon?
Do you want Madeline Halsen?
Madeline Halsen. Congratulations Karen, on Lister for a term of three years. Next position is Lister of two years of a three-year term. This was for Ed who left, is that who this was?
And we had an existing vacancy.
Right. So, do I hear any nominations for Lister for a term of two years of a three-year term?
I nominate April Green.
April Green has been nominated. Do I hear second?
Second for nomination.
Second for nomination.
And April Green, she's up.
Other nominations? Lister, two years of a three-year term. Hearing no other nominations, we're gonna close nominations. Can I have one person from the body vote for April Green? Congratulations there. All right. Constable, first constable for a year of one year, currently Rob Willis. Hearing no nominations for a constable, first constable.
I nominate Rob.
CJ?
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other nominations for first constable? Hearing no other nominations, we're gonna close nominations. Can I have someone do one vote for Kate, for Rob Willis? Erica Bowman, thank you. Second constable, currently held by Ben Williams. Any nominations for second constable?
Ben Williams.
Ben Williams has been nominated, seconded by Rob Willis. Any other nominations for second constable? Can I get one vote from the body? CJ. Ben Williams has been elected second constable for the term of one year. Trustee of public funds for a term of one year. Do I hear any nominations for, currently held by, was it Rob? Was that you, Rob?
Yes, it's Robert.
Trustee of public funds. You're on the wrong page, man. You're throwing me off. Trustee of public funds for a term of one year, currently held by Rob Willis. Any nominees? Yes?
I have a call.
Yes.
Either the Lister does or the constable. Could that be explained, please?
Yes, stand up, please. Did someone want to talk about that? So basically, she's asking what the Lister does, or what was the second one?
Constable.
As a constable, what the constable does, what the Lister does, what the Listers do?
I can do the constable. So, I, I am pretty much, I have no law enforcement ability whatsoever. That has been taken away, which is fine with me. What I do do is I become the animal control officer. So I deal with cats, dogs, horses, cows, anything that moves along that's not wildlife. If it's a moose, deer, or anything like that, I call it game ward. And a lot of times, like in the last two weeks, I've gotten about five calls in the state police where dogs have been found on the side of the road, either hit, or people picking them up. A lot of times, they pick them up right from their own homes, and bring them down to when the police are inside, or meet me somewhere where I pick them back to their house. And a lot of times, like even this past year, Eric and I went to Norway, and it was about 2:00 in the morning when I got the call, because of the time difference, and I was able to actually deal with the reuniting of the animal from Norway.
I have a question according to what you said. If you live on a property that is 60 acres or plus, and your animal is loose, it's not guaranteed that they're gonna stay on your property, but in general, they cover, you rent your property. They're not usually leashed when they're let out on the property. However, they could go, if they go off my property, it's my responsibility. But what do I do about hunters or any other people who are on my property if they injure my animal on my property, even though my dog is not leashed?
Well, you comfortably should post the property.
Post it.
Which would, would keep them hopefully off the property, which obviously it doesn't. Put vest, colorful vest on an animal, so that protects them of some kind. There's no guarantee though, because a lot of times, people come and they see something move and they shoot.
If they, if it has it properly posted, and somebody is violating, you have to game ward and the person to call.
Okay, we're getting away from the elections, guys, so, okay. So, can you ask, yes, Rob?
Greg Donaldson.
Greg, yeah.
I have a pass, constable, I mean, I'd have to be sure. There's Sletmore and Tokyo Cowles away.
I've got you.
I've got you.
Yes.
Would you like to see the statutes?
So, what the Listers do, the Listers handle the taxes in town, basically. They, they go through and they do the assessments of properties, and then they have someone do that, right? And then, basically, they set the taxes for the town. And then people can go in front of the Listers and, and challenge it, and basically challenge that.
Sounds like that may change though, because of what the representative said about a community of whispers from the state.
We'll have to see what happens with all that.
It sounds scary.
Okay, let's move along, please. We're back to trustee of public funds for a term of one year. We didn't do that right, so Rob, Rob Willis was the person previously. Do I have any nominations for trustee of public funds for a term of one year?
I'll nominate Rob Willis.
Rob Willis nominated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Can I have one person cast a vote for Rob Willis? Rob Willis, congratulations on being trustee of public funds. Next is agent to deep land for term of one year, also Rob Willis.
Andy.
Oh, was it, I'm sorry, was it Andy? My bad.
I just would be willing, but I was never asked to do anything.
Okay.
What's gonna happen again? Someone else can do it. I decline.
I nominate Andy.
She nominates.
You nominate.
I'll second.
Second nomination. Can I have one vote cast, or not, I'm sorry, any other nominations? Yeah.
I have a vote for Andy.
Okay. Any other nominations for the position of agent to deep land? Hearing no more, we're gonna close nominations. Can I get one vote from the body for Andy?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Library trustee for term of three years of a five-year term. This was held, who was this held by? Held by Jennifer Doris. Do I hear, do I have any nominations for library trustee for term of three years of a five-year term? I'm sorry, could we?
Alexa Clark.
Alexa Clark would like to do it. So, Alexa Clark's been nominated. Do I hear a second for that? Do I hear any other nominations? Not hearing any, I'm gonna close nominations. And can I have one vote cast for Alexa Clark? So passed. So, congratulations, Alexa. Library trustee for the term of five years. This was currently, who's this currently held by?
Clara.
By Clara. Yes, Alexa?
I nominate Capeluto.
Andy Capeluto has been nominated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any other nominations?
I nominate Clara.
Clara's been nominated, she declined. Any other nominations? So, hearing no other nominations, can I get a single vote from the body for Andy? Andy Capeluto. Did I say his last name?
Could you stand up?
Andy Capeluto.
Who is it? Could you stand?
Could you stand up? Are you here?
She's not here.
Oh, okay, I didn't see him.
Library trustee for term of two years. Currently held by Keegan Eaker, who resigned, so it's an open position. Do you have a nomination? Yes.
I nominate Siobhan McDermott.
Siobhan McDermott has been nominated. Can you stand up?
Second.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Paul Ravinelli.
Who?
Paul Ravinelli.
Paul Ravinelli has been nominated.
Here.
Second Paul, okay. Could you stand up? So, looks like we may have to do a vote.
I'll decline.
You'll decline, okay. So Paul's been nominated. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing no others, I'm gonna close nominations. Can I get the body to have a single person vote for Paul? CJ? Boy, I was excited, I thought we might not get to do a vote. Just streamline the system. All right. W red, the W red school district director for term of three years. Do I hear any nominations for school director for three years? I think it's currently held by Drew Hazelton, correct?
No.
No, for Dana, that's Dana. Dana West.
I nominate Dana West.
Dana West has been nominated.
Second.
He's been seconded. Any other nominations? Hearing no others, we're gonna close nominations. Can I get a single vote for Dana West from the body? Jackie Burn? You guys are making this too easy. W red school director for the term of two years of a three-year term. Drew Hazelton has been nominated.
Second.
Seconded. Any other nominations? Hearing no others, I'm gonna close nominations. Can I get a single vote for Drew Hazelton? Caroline Pearson. So that's the positions. Why, no one made it hard on me with no, no.
Pete Marks, I'm looking at two town, like, town officers, there are two positions here that are one-year terms.
Okay.
One is being up for election, town grand juror and town agent, wondering if that's intentional, whether it's just honorary positions or...
They are appointed, so they've done at the great organizational meeting, will be the next select board meeting on next Monday.
And this is where Cole retires. Okay. Moving on, Article 4. To see if the voters will approve an increase of the total annual stipend paid quarterly to the select board members as a whole to $8,500, representing a total increase of annual stipend by $1,500. Do I hear a motion to accept Article 4? Well, we have to, before, we have to, we have to have a motion, a motion out before we discuss.
So moved.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so you second. So, Mary, please stand up.
My question was, I remember last time they had given themselves extra money, and they were told they couldn't do it. So my question is, is this to take the place of the money they'd already given themselves, or is it bringing them back?
I believe it's a...
So, we were unable to increase the stipend last year. It hasn't been increased in eight, nine years.
That was my only question.
Yes, and so, actually, it's a member of the voting public pointed out the issue, so this year, we did it as a formal article, so that it could be voted on properly.
We made a mistake last year.
We did.
I have another question.
We did.
Do you don't have a question?
Yeah.
Related to this article. If we're approving this article today, the new money, we're getting new select people, so does it apply to them or only to people that vote here?
It applies to anyone moving forward, so, so anyone who's elected today, moving forward with the new fiscal year, which happens next, starts in July.
Can my second question is, when is the decision for who's on what seat on the board going to happen?
As far as this, that's done at the first meeting. They, they elect a chair and a vice chair at the first meeting, which will be next Monday.
Next Monday.
Next Monday. As well as a number of other appointed positions, they go through, before the meeting starts next Monday, they go through and they, they elect a number of, or they appoint all the positions that are, that are not elected positions with the town. Okay, we have a motion on the table. I'll read it again. To see if the voters will approve an increase of the total annual stipend paid quarterly for the select board members as a whole to $8,500, please representing a total increase of annual stipend by $1,500. Can I get all in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes act? So Article 4 passes. Article 5. To see if the voters will authorize the contribution of the general revenue and highway funds raised in excess of the amount approved by the voters for the 2324 fiscal year totaling $518,913.35 to the town's recovery fund. Do you guys want to speak about that?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, why don't we, well, I gotta give motions to, so moved, like, non-vegan, seconded by Paul Fraser. Do you guys want to talk? Do you guys want to talk about this?
So hopefully folks took a copy that's on the table of a Q and A. It's a series of questions about how the error happened and why the recommendation is what it is. We had an info session a week ago, which was attended, but not terribly well attended. And most of the questions that I perceived and we received were answered in that Q and A. Essentially, there was a mathematical error that occurred. The background is that this was in July of 2023. The tax rate is set after the grand list is locked and loaded, so to speak. That's a lister task, part of me back to your question. And that process includes a potential for a grievance between April 1 and July 1. Once all grievances are settled, the grand list is finalized, and that is the denominator for the calculation of the tax rate. What some of you who were here, back then, many of you remember, is that Terry Garland passed away suddenly just a couple months before this, and we were without a treasurer. Sarah had stepped in to that role, which had very much been Terry's portfolio up until that point. And we started an aggressive search for a replacement treasurer. We had, in fact, identified the treasurer. We had made an offer and it had been accepted in late June, and it had been our hope that she would start in early July and take over the first and foremost critical step of setting the tax rate. The flood happened literally a week later, and that candidate who had previously accepted by the end of the month had declined. We had our backs against the wall to get the tax rate set in time to issue tax bills and meet our October election date. And we, as a town, have been supported and continue to be supported by Nemrick. And that's our, that organization, that company provides municipal, financial municipal services throughout New England, and they host all of our financial processes, our general ledger and do a bunch of other, and we're, especially back then, we're doing check requisitions and other tasks that Terry would have otherwise undertaken. We asked that entity and our point person to set the tax rate for us. She did, but she, there was a fundamental failure in her calculation. And for those of you who have the Q and A in front of you, there's a sample, there's an example on page one of how municipal tax rates are set. It's a pretty straightforward process. The town had approved the budget in March of 2023, and the total revenue that had to be raised, the total budget, is then reduced by the amount of non-tax revenue. So that's the key mistake that happened here. The representative from Nemrick did not back out non-tax revenue. So the tax rate is set to raise the entire municipal budget instead of just that portion of municipal budget that had been approved to be raised by taxes. And so that yielded a very significant excess, which is the amount that's in article five, which is $518,913.35. So where does that leave us now? First of all, it's important to say that that money is not sitting in pot somewhere, right? We work on a municipal organization, which Sarah can talk to this a little bit better than me, but I'll take a stab and then we can all answer questions. So we received cash in the form of the various items of revenue that you can see in the budget, for example, for this year, from the state, grants, et cetera, revenue from the town clerk's office, and we raised taxes in October. That's our cash flow. That's the cash we have available. We also have some cash to be funds, but those funds were depleted prior to the storms in July of 2023, by virtue of the storm two years earlier in July of 2021, and we still had a deficit running after Irene. So that money, as well as money that the town has had to raise, went to pay for close to $1.7 million of repairs that had to be made on an emergency basis with respect to the storms in July '23 and December of 2023. So we're still in a flux period where we have debt outstanding, and we are receiving some funds from the federal government via the state government. And those funds come in, in part, to pay down one of the loans because it's a mandatory pay down whenever we receive FEMA funds, and also to just, to keep town operations going. We don't know where we're gonna net out in a year. We have, Greg can talk to the fact that we have been essentially, are we fully, we're fully obligated?
There are still a few outstanding projects that haven't been obligated, but the majority have been, and we haven't received fully all the money. Most of that has been paid out of the federal government into the state, so that's reassuring based on all the, you know, the flux going on. But then it also then takes a little bit of a process to come back out of the state as a grant back to the town. So we foresee that we will receive 90% of that $1.7 million. So that's another key part. If we don't get it all back, 10% is still a good chunk of money, so which all of that needs to be funded directly to the town.
And we will then taking that money to pay down the debt that we incurred to pay those expenses. So that still leaves us in a significant flood recovery fund deficit. So the recommendation of our auditors and of the select board is that that money go, the excess tax revenue that was raised, go to replenish the flood recovery fund. I think probably everybody here recognizes that the floods in '21 and '23 and Irene are not the last major floods that this town is gonna see. And while we make very significant improvements in our infrastructure with respect to each effort, and we try to enhance, you know, the effort is to mitigate so that in the future, we're in a better position to handle the floods, we don't, we need to be, we need to have funds available and not take such a significant financial bid again. So that is generally the basis of the recommendation. If there are any questions, you know, some I can answer, some Sarah can answer.
Do you have any questions? Please stand up, please.
Was the interest rate on the Vermont Bank and the M and T Bank on those loans?
Sure. So Vermont Bank was a, you know, that's a state sponsored organization. It's a floating interest rate, but it's about four, it's like 4.1, I want to say. It's about, that's roughly where it is. M and T, that was a market municipal rate at the time, so it's close to, it's around 6%. It also fluctuates. But the sooner we can pay that down, the sooner we want to pay down. Just to fore, I should, I want to disclose that because we're still in such a significant deficit position. We have an additional line of credit with M and T also a municipal rate. We have not drawn it down, but we do have, because we have to be prepared, God forbid, this summer in Athens again, and we don't have all the funds in. So we have another $800,000 line of credit.
So they'll absolutely extend more credit to us.
They will, they will.
But paying down that principal would be a big thing, so we don't have to accrue that interest, right, in the future? So, okay.
And that's what, you know, less 10%, that's what FEMA funds would go to.
CJ?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Greg, you said there's still a couple projects to happen?
There are a few that still need to be actually completed, but also I was referencing that there are a few that still need to be funded.
So they are gonna be in addition, they're an additional expense that would come out of that extra line of credit?
Right. We would, exactly.
So...
In order to get those completed, and then with the anticipation that we get the 90% back.
Right, they're included while we're seeking reimbursement.
They're part of that big number of 1.7 million.
Yes.
Okay, so what would the total, sorry, you were talking, so yeah, wait, sorry.
So I don't know if you can quickly say what's still to be done, and then I'm also curious whether you have already explored or are looking into the hazard mitigation grants.
Paul, it's the first part, there's two projects that, the first, one singular, larger project would be completed is the bridge on 30 Village. There's a wing wall that was destroyed and removed and only temporarily restored. And then that was from the July 2023 storm. There are still several projects from the December 2023 storm to be completed. Most of them are stream bank restoration along Pike's Falls Road. There is then also one on Upper Turkey Mountain Road to restore the road out to the State Park.
That's good, where on Turkey?
So it's the upper part that goes from more or less where...
From the curves above?
From the last residence to the State Park property.
That's awesome.
Though past you.
Oh, past.
So those are the ones that are left still to be completed. As far as mitigation money, there are still those projects also. So we're looking at several culverts, also additional stream bank restorations. You know, somebody can come to me with more of the details.
For sure, we need to that.
Oh, for sure, yes. And some of the mitigation has been obligated already.
Good.
Other questions, comments? Mary, please stand up.
Just a bear up. So instead of using this $518,912 to pay down the loans, it's been decided to use it as an emergency fund in case we have another flood, instead of paying down the loans, you have more money.
Greg? So the loans will, the intention is that the FEMA money will come in. We borrowed in anticipation of FEMA money coming in. So that's the, those are the funds that would be allocated to pay down the loan.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Questions? Anybody else? Kevin, second time.
What would be the difference in the FEMA money that we're getting and then the full, not the principal, that would be on the loan? And what would that difference be? And then would this money be able to pay down that principal?
So it's 10, it's roughly 10% of the total spend will not be covered. Because FEMA is up to 10%. And before, just before I forget, the interest that we're paying now is also eligible for coverage by the state. So we will submit, once we know what our total carrying cost was, while we waited for the funds to come in, we will actually submit that for reimbursement. Again, subject to 90%, it's my recollection, but it shrinks the total carrying, it certainly shrinks the carrying cost to the town. So I forgot to mention that, so I apologize.
And I tend to say, I don't know off the top of your question about how much we will still get back versus how much we borrow. I don't know that we know that exact answer, because some of the money has already come to us and we've already paid back some of it.
Right.
And some of the money, yeah, so basically, so I don't know the total totals on each side, but it's gonna be close.
We might know in the next fiscal year audit, might, but I think it's probably gonna bleed into the next, so you're gonna probably have to wait two audit cycles to really see where it shakes out.
Other questions?
Jean Bowery. If on your sheet that you gave out, the fifth one says, are there other options? If the town, the people vote this down or don't agree to do whatever is being proposed with this extra money, what is the unanticipated consequence? So what is the unexpected result?
I'm sorry, I was just...
If the town does not vote to accept this proposal, what is the, what's the outcome of that? That's the question. The expected outcome? What are the...
Oh, oh, we'd have to raise another article. I mean, we need to have an answer as to what we can, you know, what we do with the money. We would raise another one.
It would have to be, another option would have to be proposed.
Someone would have to suggest something else.
So we would, so the money would sit until another decision was made to what they were gonna do with the money?
And I'm gonna propose that the money, if it's voted down, the money be put into...
That's not for this time, though. You could, I'm sorry, Greg, so you could do a, yes, Greg? Yeah, so what you could do on this article is you could change the amount of money. You can make it less or more. That's at your discretion, but you cannot change where the money is going to. And what you're talking about is changing where the money is going to.
So we're changing it to zero, being as voting this down?
That could, you could make that... You could try to lie to do that, yes. And then if the body accepted that amendment, then we could vote on that.
Could I propose that we change it to zero then?
So we have an amendment, she's proposing an amendment to change the dollar amount from $518,913.35 to zero. I need a second on that motion. Not hearing a second, the motion is not accepted.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Call the question.
Calls a question, second?
Second.
Second for Drew. So all in favor of, let me repeat, to see if the voters will authorize the contribution of the general revenue and highway funds raised in excess of the amount approved by the voters of 2023 to 2024 fiscal year totaling $518,913.35 to the town fund recovery. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes aye, so the motion passes. Okay, article six. To see the sum of the money of, to see what sum of money the voters will vote to pay to the town's running expenses and how it will be collected. So this will be the budget number. That's Bonnie.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we spend a total of $1,889,103, of which $1,507,594 is to be raised by taxation. And that, along with anticipated receipts of $381,509, will equal the budget amount that I mentioned first.
What was that first number? I'm sorry, I missed that.
The which amount?
The first number that you gave. When's the...
$1,889,103 is the total budget.
Okay, so a motion's on the floor to raise the total amount of the town, $1,889,103, of that $1,507,594 raised through taxes.
No.
Okay, sorry.
The motion is to spend a total of $1,889,103, of which $1,507,594 is the amount raised by taxation. And that, along with the anticipated revenue of $381,509, equals the total budget. And it is to be paid, paid on or before October 1st, 2025, and it would be all unpaid taxes as of October 2nd, are delinquent, with an 8% penalty added, and interest at the rate of 1% starting the 1st of December will be in addition until paid in full.
Okay.
And the moment...
Do you want me to repeat that for a minute?
Does everybody understand that?
Does anybody understand what you said?
Yes.
Try a second.
Second.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I just want to mention that Bonnie has played this role, I don't even know how many years, certainly for as long as I can remember. Second of all, this year, Bonnie very graciously gave her time to review the budget after it had been prepared. She came into the office, she met with Sarah, she answered my questions, she reviewed every document I sent to her with a smile and a thank you, and I just really feel strongly that she deserves a round of applause.
I wanted to, no, well, I have two things.
Okay.
One is that I have in this amount, I have... One is that I have in this amount, I have deleted the visiting nurse of Vermont, New Hampshire out of the budget. It's the line I did. Being that I read in the newspaper on Valentine's Day. They are no longer serving our town and about 20 other towns anymore. So deleted them from the budget.
Okay.
The other question I have, and I might want to make another merge, is for the select board, on page 15 of the budget, under the town buildings, it was brought to my attention, I didn't notice this earlier, that on the bank building repairs and maintenance, this current year and the years before, the budget amount was $500. This in proposed budget, it goes up to 5,000. And there's no mention in either the select board report or the historical foundations report as to why.
Okay.
For the oil tank? The bank building is without heat currently because the oil tank broke and made a mess. And it's been like that a couple of years. So the extra amount budgeted is to replace the oil tank in the bank building so we can eventually get heat back in the building.
And that's a bit of a cleanup.
Then I won't, I won't bake any further.
But the point has been in the report.
Right.
So motion is on the table to spend.
Quick question.
Yeah, quick question, sure.
Quick question. So Bonnie, are you saying that line 143, visiting nurse service, that number has been deleted from the number you, it's already out?
I deleted it in my note.
Even though it's.
So the 33, 36 is gone.
Yeah.
And I can also speak on the visiting nurse. I did receive an email from them. They said they are no longer servicing our town and they will not be collecting this current appropriation. It asked us to remove it. So Bonnie is spot on.
Okay.
Okay.
And does it include the 1,500 that we approved?
The raise, does the budget include the raise?
Yeah, it's in the budget.
Any questions? Erica?
I have my whole, I have different questions. Is that okay?
Regarding this motion?
Regarding this motion, on, just maybe clarification, on line 190 and 191. Maybe I just don't know. Where, isn't Old Cheney Road in Windham or near Windham?
Near.
It's only in Marlin.
There's particles in Jamaica.
So I know it's in Jamaica, but I see that we have contracted the town of Windham for about $5,000, $5,200 for town, for road maintenance. But also Old Cheney Road specifically for $5,000. I just wanted to be sure that's not.
In Arrow. So Ben Lowe does the Old Cheney Road and the other ones are contracted right in the town. So they're brokers doing it. But we contracted right in Ben Lowe to do the whole Cheney Road. So it's always been longer than I've been here.
So there's two contracts basically for that small group of roads that are well outside of our ability to service. It would take us an hour to get up there and plow. So we've done that for many years.
And all.
Other questions? Yes. Are we getting even pumped for the bank? Pumped for the bank is a question?
I have no idea.
Pump to select, if you're going to use a pump to select for our meetings, because it does, it will be on the agenda.
Other questions? Comments? So again, the motion is to spend the amount of 1,889,103 with 1,507,594 raised by taxes and 381,509 raised by expected revenue, paid in full by October 1st, 2025. On October 2nd, payments will be considered late with an 8% fee added and 1% interest starting on December 1st. That's the motion that's currently on the table. Is anyone going to call the vote?
Call the vote.
Call the vote. Jessica.
Second.
Second by Fran. All in favor of passing the budget?
Aye.
All against? The budget passes. Okay. Article Seven, to see if the voters will authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. Do you have a motion for that? CJ? Motion.
Second.
Second by Nelson, voting. Any questions on this? Comments? This is pretty typical. We do this every year. No question?
You have something else? We need a question.
Do you have a question? Nelson, do you have a question? We have some. You want to, go ahead.
This seems like a very vague article to me. It says authorized to borrow money in anticipation, but no amount, no explanation.
Do you want to answer that?
If it affords the select board the ability to borrow money, knowing that taxes are going to be paid in October for exigent circumstances. So for example, we did it in July of 2020, you know, between July and October of 2023. We ended up borrowing some money which was paid down by taxes.
It's basically allowing the select board to borrow money before the tax revenues come. So that they can hunt the town.
Not more, not additional.
Not additional.
That's what we approved.
What we approved, right. So what was approved in the previous article?
We have multiple.
Yeah.
Well, I'm almost going to say that happens in July.
Close, Nelson, you close the article. Close, I have a second on that. Drew Hazelton. So the article is closed. All in favor of, all opposed to see if voters will authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? Say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Moving on to Article Eight. Shall the voters authorize the select board to spend unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest? Get in a motion? CJ? Second?
Second.
People? Comments, questions on this? Yes, you.
Can I add an amendment word?
Yeah, if you'd like to add one, sure.
Provided that next year at the annual meeting, a specific list is given for the, what was, I guess we have to say, what was received and what was spent.
So motions on the table, adding to this saying that at the next, at the next town meeting, a list will be given of all of the unanticipated funds that were granted, gifts, or interest that was spent. There's a motion on the table, amendment motion on the table. Do I hear a second? Second, second? Any other comments or questions on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Isn't that what we get in the audit report?
Just going to say that. We're going to see it as part of our audit report. So.
Okay, well, we can, well, we can bring it to the meeting. No, that's fine. So if the body proves so.
Are we able to do that? Greg? Are we able to change it in that manner?
I don't know. You're not changing the money amount. You're not changing the substance of the article. You're just reporting a war. Adding a recording piece to it. So the amendment that's on the table is to provide a list of all the unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest on, in the next, at the next town meeting. So do someone want to call the vote?
Question?
Go ahead.
Shouldn't we vote on the art, Jack's ground, shouldn't we vote on the article as it stands before voting on the amendment?
You vote on amendment.
You have to do your amendments.
Right.
I'd like to make this comment because I think it's important when we are spending money, okay? It makes sense to break out what that bill was. Marion Scudney, I used to run a cancer center whenever I had a gift or a grant or anything. I used to take it out of my budget and show the hospital where I worked what was taken in as a gift, grant, or whatever. Some people know when you can take that out. If you break it out, it's obvious. I'm a mess for the obvious, okay? I just want to know straight up what we got and what's going out the door. I don't think that's hard.
Just as you said before, it will be included.
I know, but I have to dig for it. And Grandma here doesn't have the time.
I'm old. It's in our financials. We can talk to the auditor.
Kindly, please. Thank you.
So the amendment is on the table. Someone want to call a question?
Call the question.
Call the question, second? So all in favor of the amendment to provide a list of unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest at the next select board, at the next select board, at the next town meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
I think we're going to have to do a hand vote because I think this is. You guys want to do a ballot? You need seven people who want to do a ballot. You got to get seven people to raise your ballot.
Ballot.
Ballot, okay. So let's do a. Yellow. Yellow.
That's the time what the answers need.
All right, we have the final vote here. This is only on the amendment. This is not on the actual article. The noes, 41, the yeses, 30.
Say that again.
The noes, 41, the yeses, 30. So the amendment fails. So that brings us back to the original article, Article Eight. Shall the voters authorize the select board to spend unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and interest? The article is open.
Who's called a question?
Any other question? Call a question? Fran, any, a second on that?
Second.
Second. So the question is called. All in favor of Article Eight?
Aye.
Against?
Against.
Okay, article passes. Article Nine, shall the voters exempt the Jamaica Volunteer Fire and Rescue Inc. land and building from taxation for a period of five years as provided by Title 32, Section 3840 BSA? The state said. So moved. Second. Any questions, comments on this? Any, turning the fire card, getting their land exempted from taxes, built. Questions we called? Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of?
Aye.
All in favor of the voters exempting Jamaica Volunteer Fire and Rescue land and building from taxation for a period of five years as provided by Title 32, Section 3840 BSA? Say aye.
Aye.
Against? Article Nine passes. Article Ten, to set the time for the opening of the next annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in March 2026. So moved by second.
Second.
I agree. So basically, this is having a meeting. Again, we can try to do them on Saturdays, but does anyone have any questions or comments about this?
Will they ever do these things like, what do you call it, a Zoom meeting or some such? It might make attendance better.
A Zoom meeting? Have we always thought about Zoom meetings or doing it online?
I don't believe it's allowed by statute, but I'd have to look it up actually.
Thank you.
Yeah, Greg?
I would just make an amendment that we set the time as 10 a.m.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So there's an amendment to set the time at 10 a.m. for the next meeting. Do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
Chrissy? Want to close the question? You want any comments on that? Yeah, Kevin?
I just think it's hard because my partner, she's a teacher and to get a substitute and stuff, it's kind of hard to do it during the week like this.
Okay.
So to like have like a career be able to participate in something like this. That's just something I'd like to say. I mean, like two days. I mean, it's awesome. That is tradition, but it's just like tough for a lot of people. So.
Is there still a session on town meeting? I know ours is.
Uh, no.
Okay, so we're, we're talking about the amendment now. So the amendment, we have, we have an amendment on the floor for the town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday, March 26 at 10 a.m. Any other comments around the 10 a.m. time?
Call a question.
Question is called by April? Second?
I second.
So all in favor of setting the time to 10 a.m.? Say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, amendment passes. So now back to the article. To set the time of the opening meeting for the next annual town meeting to be held at the first Tuesday in March 2026 at 10 a.m. That's not how that reads. And it's open on the top. Any other questions or comments on that as far as having?
Questions?
So moved.
Any call question?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, Article Ten passes. Article 11, to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. This is a form that's open. If people have things they want to talk about the community. Erica?
I was just wondering, are there new people to the community that are here that want to stand up? I feel like there's a lot of new faces, but we need to just. Welcome.
Welcome. Any next?
I'd like to thank everybody for voting me back in as school director. I want to point out, we have an informational meeting, March 25th, and you get to vote on the school budget for March 26th. I'd like to say that Drew has definitely led the charge in trying to get the budgets reduced. We are going to take a heavy hit in the town of Jamaica. It's going to hurt. Yeah. You can come see us at the meeting. Here we'll have a meeting before then. And you want to come vent, come vent. Let them know how you feel, especially the supervisory union. We tried to cut the supervisory union budget and it wasn't successful. And so if any budgets get voted down, the hit will be on our local budget at this point. So.
When is the meeting?
The informational meeting is March 25th. At Lilliman Gray.
What about meeting between now and then?
It'll be at Lilliman Gray. And I think, what are we, the second Monday? I think we're on the second Monday. We bounce back and forth from Mondays and Wednesdays. But the second Monday and then the WUC SU is the third every other month, something like that. On a Wednesday at 7 o'clock. So we'd really love to hear you come and at that informational meeting and speak.
On the 23rd, 7 o'clock?
25th.
25th, 7 o'clock.
Lilliman Gray.
Dana, is there a Zoom option for the meeting?
Yes, there probably will be a Zoom. We definitely do the school board meetings in Zoom. Hopefully the link is correct. Can't always promise that. We've had some last minute changes in the last few meetings. It was ridiculous. No, not my fault because I don't run Zoom. So please come. We'd love to hear from you. Some parts of the board probably don't like public involvement, but me and Drew, we love it when you show up and tell us how. Controversy brings out everybody.
Thanks, David. Drew?
Couple of things I want to point out as we. I think going to the school meeting and then the budget vote, Jamaica is looking at a, another almost 7% taxation reduction in the school budget. Almost 7% this year. And I think some important pieces to understand with that is that that is with the supervisory union buying down their budget with 1.1 million dollars in fund balance and the education district buys about a half million dollars in fund balance on top of that. What that means is that that's artificially lowering your tax rates and bringing it down to that 7% increase that you're looking at. On the article, when it's presented to the taxpayers, I tried to get the language to you, but we couldn't because it lists the per pupil spending at $16,000 and change. But it's important that everybody knows that per pupils are not kids. If I was to tell you that, you know, the number of pupils in our school was 100, I think most people in this room would look for 100 children. I think most people in this room would look for a hundred children. That's not how our education funding model works. So our per pupil spending is quite different than that. Um, we use the long-term weighted average to count kids now based on a formula change. What you're really voting on is spending thirty-two thousand dollars per student to educate our kids. That's pre-K through twelve. Um, again, Dana said that we spent a lot of time from Jamaica trying to get some clarity as to what that money was going to, especially in the supervisory union budget. Never did give answers as to what, um, some of the money was being spent on. Um, half a million dollars in positions that we're unable to get extra job descriptions and stuff for. So you will be asked to vote on a budget you're being asked to spend thirty-two thousand dollars per student. Um, that's going to be roughly a seven percent tax increase for Jamaica. And I can promise you that the fund balance that they're using this year to set that rate down is not available for future years. Um, but it's gonna be more painful as we move forward. So I would encourage you to continue to get involved. Uh, we had a bunch of folks from Jamaica that came to meetings and zoomed in and asked questions, but we need public involvement, public engagement, um, if we're going to find a way to do this education. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Chrissy?
Followed on the education theme. First of all, thank you for your work on the budget. With all the reform that's potentially happening in our state, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of information coming out. A friend of mine and I started a Facebook page to try to just get news articles out, put up meeting times. Um, this is across, um, Windham County and Bennington County. We work across town lines, S U lines, which is why I call that. So if anybody's interested, it is called Rural Southern Vermont Public Schools Community Forum. You can go ahead and invite or request to join. Um, and it's again, just sharing information so that you can go to one spot and see articles and meetings and the survey links on it, so.
Can you say the name again? Is there an abbreviation to it?
There is no, uh, hold on a second. So it is. No abbreviation. Rural Southern Vermont Public Schools Community Forum.
Did you put that on the Jamaican thing?
Yes, I'll have Karen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
I'm Madeline Abraham with the Jamaica Historical Foundation. And yes, mark your calendars for Saturday, August sixteenth, Jamaica Day. This year, the parade is coming back and we have a lot of activities all over the town. But also, we've got several more actors coming for the whole weekend. But the only way this kind of activity or production gets done is mini hands. So get in touch with Karen or myself. Um, we want to have as many people involved as possible and not at the last minute.
Can you mention the community quilt?
Oh, and also very quickly, uh, Penny Allen is putting together a community quilt project. Uh, so you can find information of that online on the Facebook page and also Jamaica oh-five-three-four-three Facebook page.
Greg?
Hi, I'm Glenn. I guess I'm the Jamaica Emergency Management Director. And I just wanted to bring up to the back of the world, I'd just update the town's local emergency management plan. It needs to be approved by June first. Uh, we've had a lot of really valuable people on our emergency management committee move away. And we're, um, looking to help backfill some people on the emergency management committee. It's not a lot of work now, but it will be a lot of work when it hits the fan. So I'd much rather have everything in place in anticipation of that. Um, if anybody's interested, I can, uh, tell you what it's all about. Probably look in maybe two hours a week between now and June first before we go before the select board to get the plan approved. So any help would be greatly appreciated.
Say that that will be your number two. It was Jen Dordaduke for many years.
And then Dana.
And then Dana, right? Um, so it's a really interesting spot. You can learn a lot about how emergency management systems in the state of Vermont operate. And like Greg is saying, there's a little bit of work to get the plan updated and together, but then it's really, you're available in the event of an emergency and those are critical positions. So if someone is interested, folks are interested, please.
You're fine.
I just wanted to ask if there's an update on when our bridge on Depot Street is going to start construction? It's, my memory, it was supposed to be two years ago in the fall and nothing has happened yet. A lot of heavy trucks go over that bridge. And my fear is I'm gonna go off the bridge and end up in the water one of these days. So I'd like you to know if there's an update on that.
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
The trust bridge going over into the state park is one of your references.
I live up there and I care.
We're at the end of Depot.
Right, right.
So that bridge has many state projects, um, has continually been pushed out. Um, it is inspected every year, so the weight limit is much lower than what we really need there. But it is, I mean, it is inspected, so I think the fear of going into the river if you're under the weight limit is not well founded, but certainly don't drive the big trucks over there. Uh, which does put limits on what goes on over there, obviously, but. Right now, we are expecting within the next month to see proposed, um, engineering plans for the bridge. The best case scenario is that it's completed in the end of summer twenty-twenty. That's the best case scenario. Um, so all those things. We've had many floods throughout the state. It relies a lot of state funding. Um, we are lucked out in a way that, uh, we are paying five percent of the engineering and culinary work, the town is. But all the remaining costs for planning and also construction is being covered through Vermont State Plans and also through the, um, Infrastructure Act of a few years ago. So the upside is that we will have an improved bridge without a whole lot of dime coming out of our pocket, but it's, it's, there's a lot of challenges obviously within the state budget and repairing bridges all over the place, so.
Right. Understand, there are heavy, heavy trucks still go over that bridge. That should not.
So and the delay, remember, we had, there was an approved plan. And it was on its way. It was actually on schedule and then the storms came in twenty-twenty-three. And that did, that caused an entire reset. So it's now a different bridge plan. Um, we don't have the final engineering package. It's gonna be, it's not gonna just simply be a reshoring of the existing bridge. The bridge is going to be replaced. So that, that's part of the plan.
And of course, I'd like to thank the whole fire department and folks like that who were able to come up and help us when we had emergencies and there are a lot of people. I mean, there's like three families that live. Live up there, so it certainly is a scary thing when I've had to deal with the emergencies, you know? And that's why I, you know, sometimes I see a huge truck and it's like, are they gonna go down into the river or, you know? Or when I drive over, it's a parking weaken so much that I'm gonna go down.
Thank you. Other?
Just quickly, there was a group there by women of Jamaica. Many, many, many.
Two early two thousand, five minutes, four hours.
Each square has a family or a family.
I would just like to say that we're very fortunate that we haven't had to use, you know, Sonic Hall for emergencies, but it is available down there so that people do know. We have a generator and everything there, so we are able to take in people if something happened. If it did, we would close the lodge upstairs so that we could make use of everything that's available down there, so. So that the town knows that we are there.
Great, thank you, Greg. Paul Fraser?
Hi, I'm Paul Fraser. Um, there's a position that's going to be made. It's only temporarily filled by me for the last ten or twelve years. And as someone, remember, last summer I wasn't available a whole lot. So I need a backup person or somebody to take the job. And the job is called, it's called, the technical term is town services officer. That was a state mandated position years ago and the state did away with it. They didn't tell us. They just do it. So it's no longer in your books. The job title was done away with, but the job was not. So there's still a need for somebody in the town. Basically, all it involves is being somebody who has a good idea of what's going on in the region. So when a family or an individual runs into an emergency, this individual can be contacted by Mary, as it turned out last week, who will then contact me. And the idea is to help that individual who may not be familiar with the situation or how to maneuver the the bureaucracies to get stuff done for their emergency to be available through the town. There's a little bit of a financial thing in that there's a connection between the town services officer and the Salvation Army. And then the Salvation Army gives us a budget of something like five hundred dollars or something. And that we ended up, the months that we don't spend it on individuals, we donate a hundred bucks to the weekend. But it's minor kid work, a little tiny thing that has to be done. The point is, it needs to be filled in my absence. Probably my absence could start now. But the idea though is that for those of you who are new, as well as those of you who've been on for a while, they're looking for something. Not a lot of time, but when you're needed, you're really needed, um, for a couple of days or a couple of hours. And there's funding available on emergency to the Salvation Army and other, there's other funding sources through the town. Somebody who can be trained really quickly in about all an hour, a lot of funding sources, the minor tiny little bit of paperwork, but the availability for Mary to have somebody to call. Oh, Sarah, depending whoever answers, the phone is Mary, I see. Um, to help people who are traveling through, who live in Jamaica, who are members of the Jamaican community. Um, last week's case, it was someone from town. But nonetheless, it's the town services officer. It's kind of like the town social worker, I guess. But the idea is it's really valuable for a day or two that it's valuable. And it's very much appreciated. So I would really appreciate anybody who's interested to give it to me or Sarah or Mary. And that can, as it turns out, and we connect that connection. But I appreciate it and so would an awful lot of people who don't even know they need it yet. Thank you.
Other business?
Hi, Madeline. I'm your town librarian. Um, so we're open Tuesdays and Thursdays, eleven to seven, and Saturdays, ten to one. We just redid our whole children's room this year. You saw that in the town report. It's really, really lovely. Um, we're gonna continue doing updates to the building. One of the biggest things that we're adding this coming year is, um, I mean, we've always kind of done it unofficially, is home delivery. So we're kind of, we're trying to reach people that can't come into the library to bring them services and books and movies and snowshoes and all the things that we have in the library. And you don't have to be a senior or homebound. You can just not be able to get there. So if you're a mom or caregiver with little ones and you need books or anything like that, um, please reach out. We have like the applications at the library. And we're also linked with the South London Dairy Library now because I'm the librarian there as well. So we have a lot more ebooks and resources and things like that. So, um, bring your Kindles, get your library cards. Come see me and we'll get you all set up to go. Yes.
Anyone interested in learning about the Jamaica area, mountain bike line, this is encouraged to take a copy of our one major, which is on February the day air. Our big meeting is completion phase one of a mountain bike skills trail at the Jamaica School, which will officially open. It's great. Other business? Andy?
Hey, everybody. I'm Andrew Gosh. I'm the president of the Jamaica Community Arts Council. So we are trying to host a lot of events here in the town hall and all across Jamaica. When the weather gets better, hopefully in Jamaica State Park, we have some concerts this weekend. Solar Fest on Friday, six-thirty to ten. We hope to see you all there. All of us, these are gonna go to benefit solar families, so please come out. We have two bands playing. There's gonna be a full raffle. I'll contact you up, so I hope to see you there. There's another concert on Sunday at seven o'clock. Glenn David Andrews organized by Kate Logan. She really did everything. So please come out and support her. Glenn David Andrews loves coming to play in here, so I'll be there and it's gonna be super fun. We have a lot more concerts coming up in spring and summer. Uh, if you have any ideas or you have any hacks that you'd like to see play, please contact us. You can come talk to me. You can go to our website, jamaicamunityarts.org. Find us on Facebook and Instagram and, uh, yeah, that's our website. Yeah, so we're really excited to do some fun events in the community. If you have ideas, we'd love to hear from you. We have a meeting this evening at seven o'clock at Jamaica House, so Jamaica, we'd love to see you there. Group fitness on Mondays, six-thirty with Tom Glass. He's great. He'll really make you work. And, uh, yoga sessions every first Sunday of the month, which we're looking to increase, so thank you.
Hi, I'd like to ask Greg for an update, if there is one, on what I'm calling the wastewater or the water department plan for downtown.
I can speak to that, but I'm not the full expert on it, but as of now, it's, it is on hold due due to the lack of a funding source. Um, a lot of the engineering work and stuff has gone in behind it. We certainly well need it in town, but we're kind of up against it.
There's a little bit more, um, information also in the planning commission report that's in the town report. Uh, he's, um, and you can always attend the planning commission meeting.
Other business? John?
If anybody's over here getting information, I'll maybe drop these off with Karen.
Yeah.
Can you use them next year?
Yeah, we can use them next year. If it's easy as this with no, with no paper, hold on. Definitely save the paper.
Don't forget to sign an oath that you just got a new position. Brought on this year.
So can I get, can you get a motion? Oh, go ahead. Will you adjourn? We have it again. All favor? Thanks, Josh. See y'all next year.